Good evening and welcome to the Beaverton School Board meeting for May 24. And we will start off this evening by taking a roll. If board members will just signify by saying here, that would be great. Zone one, Susan Greenberg.
Here.
Zone two, Anne Brian.
Here.
Zone three, Eric Simpson.
Here.
Zone four, Donna Tyner.
Here.
Zone five, Leanne Larson.
Here.
Zone seven, Vice Chair Tom Colette.
Here.
And Chair Becky Timchuck from zone six, present. All right, with that, we will start off this evening with our guests. And our first guest, who are always glad to see every week, will be joined by our BEA President Sarah Schmidt. Sarah, the floor is yours.
Thanks Becky. Good evening Superintendent Grodding, Chair Tim Chuck and members of the board. As you know, there has been an emerging pattern of attacks on anti racism and anti bias work in education. We've seen the actions of individuals and organizations that seek to undermine racial equity work here in Beaverton, as well as districts in our region and across the country. In response to these efforts, the Beaverton Education Association reaffirms our commitment to racial equity and social justice work through professional learning, policy change, and working in partnership with our community and our students. We are looking to district leaders to also reaffirm a commitment to this work. We cannot tolerate complacency on one of the most pressing issues in modern public education. We have brought proposals to the bargaining table to codify these commitments in our collective bargaining agreement. And we assume this is a common interest of district leadership. We want to work together to realize the aspirational statements the district has made about equity and anti racism. We hope to continue to see BSD leaders push forward with this important work, even when it gets difficult. On last Tuesday of last week, the Beaverton community elected four school board members who will move our school district forward in a way that supports our students and respects educators. Our community resoundingly rejected bigotry, racism, and targeted attacks on educators who are dedicated to our students and to educational justice. Students, educators, families, and community members united behind a vision of safe, equitable, and inclusive schools. I want to congratulate Karen Perez de Silva, Susan Greenberg, Ugona Enyanaya, and Sudina Garg on being elected to the BSD School Board. And we look forward to the professional expertise, lived experiences, and commitment to centering students that these leaders will bring to our district. I know there's more work to do in the coming weeks than you aren't done yet, but I want to thank Anne, Leanne, and Donna for your many years of service to the Beaverton School District. And your work is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate you being here this evening. And board members, I always forget this at the very beginning. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda this evening? All right, with that, we'll go on. Now, our next guests are, we always favorite part, love to hear from our Beaverton Student Advisory Committee. And I believe I saw President Miriam and we have Beatrice and Riley and Jonah. So good full house here. So whoever wants to take it away first, we look forward to hearing from you.
I can go first and just introduce what we did last meeting because it was a while ago. Hi, my name is Miriam and I'm a senior at the International School of Beaverton. So our last meeting was on May 5th. And I think one of the most important things we did during that meeting that we haven't been able to do was really reflect over our work this past year. Since our last meeting is next week as a group. And we basically like all admitted that because of COVID-19, of course, we maybe weren't able to do all the work that we wanted to do, granted the circumstances, but we feel like we really paved the way for a lot of work to happen next year. And we did a lot of groundwork and we did a lot of great work this month, actually. So really excited to see it all unfold.
Hi, I'm Riley. I can share on behalf of our mental health committee today. So as you know, we split into two groups and I'm going to talk about what we've done so far for mental health. So about a month and a half ago, we did a high school wide for all the, we're open to all high schoolers, a survey about what they think that we need to improve on as a district in helping students with mental health, what they wish teachers knew about students and mental health, and then what are some things they'd like to see enacted. So at our last meeting, we started to go through, I mean, we are about 300 responses. So we started to go through all these responses. And then we hope to bring it all together to do some sort of like virtual meeting with, that we can then give out to all staff members and teachers with what students want to see because it's going to affect them. So we think this has been super good so far. And then we're really excited to continue this into the next year.
I can speak next. Last Wednesday, the Beaverton Student Advisory Committee organized and led a student discussion with law enforcement surrounding the presence of school resource officers in the school district. We encourage you to view the discussion. It is on the Beaverton School District YouTube channel. Students had the opportunity to ask one question and one follow up, and the law enforcement answered the questions. We hope this discussion was a good step towards helping the BSD decide on the appropriate role of police officers in our school district.
Yeah, I agree with what Beatrice just said. Really what this conversation was, it was students asking important questions of school resource officers. And the fact that we had the chance to do that, I'm grateful for it. And also it was a really big win for the students. The students got the chance to ask really the important questions about how our buildings are policed. And so I would highly encourage everyone here and everyone who may be viewing this to really go check that out because there's some really important questions that got asked. And yeah, I think that's, that's most of what we've been able to do this year as the School Resource Officer Group, the BSAC. And I want to thank everyone here so much for your support and helping us get that done, so.
Well, I appreciate all of you being here this evening. This is the last time, folks, that we're going to be seeing our students because some of them will have been graduated by the time we meet next. And for those that are juniors, we're going to go forward. And so yes, I do want to open it up to board members if you would like to have any questions. I think all of these great folks would be willing to answer any questions. So Anne?
Well, first of all, it is, you know, a little sad that this is your last time when you'll be meeting with us. But also, you know, I just want to commend you for the energy that you brought to this work. I am so appreciative that you were willing to share with us the video of your conversation with the school resource officers who have experience of working in the buildings. I'm wondering sort of what the next steps are with that work. And particularly if there are aspects of what you learned that are helpful to share with others and how we will be able to communicate, I could just feel that even though it's over Zoom, I could feel the energy for that each of you have had of like things that you learned and what, how that is helping you form an opinion about maybe what next step should be. What do you see as next steps and how do we help others have that experience that you had?
I can, I can feel that question. For me personally, I believe the next step is, you know, we've gotten the chance to ask law enforcement some important questions. Now I think it's time we ask students some really important questions about how they feel about SROs in our buildings and their role now that they're able to, to know more about that, that position after having their questions answered. And I think that's sort of, you know, the next step, we need equal voice in both those aspects.
Yeah, I think we wanted to create a dialogue between both students and law enforcement. And to be able to do that, a lot of students had a lot of like uncertainty and didn't know exactly what SROs were doing in the school. And there were maybe some assumptions made. So we want to make sure that people got the, especially students got the education piece first. And then maybe later in the future when we ask them, or like we can create some sort of like direct dialogue between the two parties.
So if I'm hearing you right, it's sort of like a meeting part two. So that there's more of an opportunity for conversation between the groups. Great.
Leanne?
I just want to say to you guys, I watched the YouTube and it was fascinating. I really enjoyed it and I really appreciate having the opportunity to do that. I thought you all asked very insightful questions and you really got at the heart of, I think, what the community and the board and the district is, are wrestling with. So great job in really getting to the root of that. And I am excited to see what you hear from the students and, and how that conversation evolves. And then where it goes from there, but just an awesome job. I thought it was very professional and very kind in the way you asked and in how you interacted with them. So great job to you guys.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Susan?
Well, I just wanted to thank you all for your hard work being on the BSAC. If you're seniors, congratulations on graduating. And juniors, I look forward to you being back next year, hopefully. And you guys are bringing a lot to the table and a lot of thought provoking things. So thank you so much.
Any other? Comments? Well, I just again, it's been a highlight for me to be able to meet with this group all year long. I so appreciate your dedication to giving the school district at least two hours. And you came to many other things representing that student voice. And we were able to have conversations about how to get more student voice and more interactions with the school board. But I think with the situation that we were all given, we would have loved to have been having more one-on-one meetings and interactions. But just so appreciate on top of your education and all your other extracurricular activities that you made the district a priority and, and how you went about going with complex issues like mental health of our students and how we interact with public safety in our schools and SROs. That you really did a phenomenal job of tackling such complex issues. And so thank you so much for being a part of the BSAC and we hope you have a great summer. So thanks for being with us tonight. All right, with that, we move now into public participation. We recognize that this has been a difficult year with being in Zoom of how we do our board meetings and how we do engage in public participation, very different than when we have in-person board meetings and people can sign up and, and come and speak to us for two minutes. That we've asked everyone all this year to submit things in writing. And we open that up on Thursdays and it is provided to all of us as board members. All the testimony is provided to us in writing and then we do things in the public record. This time around, we had 26 comments. Seven of those came from community members. Seventeen of those came from parents and one came from a student. The topics were in various categories. The board, we were able to put these in categories. We had two conveying to us that they would like to do away with mask and that all of our schools that they are able to, students are able to go without the mask. We had one person that did not care for the new social studies curriculum that we are going to be adopting and felt like there were some things in there that needed to be looked at a little bit closer. We had someone that shared with us that they did not care for our new sex education for K through five. And also someone wants us to start allowing for live testimony rather than doing this in writing. Also, someone wanted to make sure that we are on the record for going back to full-time education in the fall. And we had 12 people that wrote to us about, they do not believe that we should be discussing critical race theory in our schools. And then we also had 11 people writing to us in support of the district equity work that we are, are doing. And so there was a variety of different topics that were shared with us on that. Also, I want to share that in our comments, we received six comments from community members, parents. And we state very specifically in our public testimony engagement that you can only sign up for yourself and no other comments are limited to 1,000 characters per person and only one public testimony per person. And the board, the school board at public testimony will not hear charges or complaints against any employee of the district. And comments not falling within these guidelines will not be accepted. There were six public comments that we as a board did not accept. That there were people that were calling out on a specific employee. That specific employee was our superintendent and they were asking the board to ask to fire him or to resign. And the reason we ask at the very beginning of every one of our meetings or soon at the beginning of our meetings, if there are any changes to the agenda, is that anytime any one of the seven of us as board members are open to asking for something to be on this agenda. This past week, I have not received any comments from any board member that asked to be on the agenda for us to discuss the employment of our superintendent. Our superintendent is carrying out the policies that this board has put forth. And that is for this district to be an anti-bias, anti-racist district. And he is doing his job and this board stands behind him doing his job. And with that, we will now move to reports. And the first report up is from Superintendent Rodding.
Muted. Thank you. Welcome, school board, staff, families, and students. First thing I'm going to talk about is our comprehensive distance learning and limited in-person instruction. And as you know, our district does continue to offer hybrid learning experience for our students as well as a comprehensive distance learning opportunity. I once again, as we've done in our last two board meetings, want to say our plan is to come back full-time in-person next year in the fall. It is also our plan for those students who are uncomfortable with coming back. They will be able to engage in our flex online school in which they would continue to be in comprehensive distance learning. And that would be offered K through 12. The district continues to take guidance from the Oregon Health Authority as well as the Department of Education. And that information comes in and changes almost, I would say, weekly. And we continue to try to stay up with it. I think we're in a good place right now as vaccinations continue to go up. Positive cases and hospitalizations continue to go down. Activities and athletics, we also continue to take guidance from the Oregon Health Authority and OSAA. Our students are practicing, they are participating, and they are competing. And we really look forward to being able to come back in the fall. We also follow mask wearing guidance as dictated by the OSAA and OHA in those activities. Under the budget, I just want to, special big thank you to our budget committee for forwarding and approving the 2021-22 budget at their last meeting and forwarding it to our school board for adoption at the June board meeting. Our school board and district continue to advocate for a $9.6 billion funding level to meet our current service level. Our current budget was built on the $9.3 billion allocation. We are hopeful after a very, very positive May state revenue forecast, our legislature will increase our K-12 budget appropriation. And I know several of board members as well as our association leadership and others are lobbying our legislators to increase that funding from 9.3 and get it up as high as we can get it to maintain our current service level. Also, I want to talk to you a little bit about our summer school. Our summer school application was approved on its first submission. And we are really excited about being able to offer opportunities to students pre-K through 12, if they would like a summer school experience. And that could look like credit recovery, it could look like enrichment, some sort of other additional support, social emotional supports. It's really wide open and we're really excited. Want to once again thank Stacy Gale, our retired Beaver Acres principal, who, who kind of took the helm of this as well as Paul Autumn, our flex principal, and all the other staff and their leadership support and planning and creating a program in an extremely, extremely short period of time. Also, I would like to talk to you about graduations. We're excited to be able to be planning and offering in-person graduation this year for our students and their families. I know that John Franco is currently working with principals to design these graduation ceremonies in our stadiums. In addition, I believe our principals are going above and beyond. We still have some students and families who are uncomfortable with coming to in-person. And those principals, under the guidance of Dr. Franco, are really looking at other ways to celebrate those students. Could be through a drive-through, it could be through some different Zooms. So we're really trying to accommodate the different students we have. And last week, I was able to go to Oak Hills where Lori Therrien was recognized as one of 16 regional winners for Oregon Teacher of the Year. So she will be competing for Oregon Teacher of the Year. Lori is a special education teacher at Oak Hills and it was really a great ceremony. We really surprised her. Her parents flew up from California and her mom, who is retired now, used to be a retired middle school teacher. And then also her husband is an administrator in the district and her son was able to be there. And it was just a, a great, a great event. I want to thank Shelley and her team for making it a great event. And we look forward to Lori competing for Oregon Teacher of the Year. And finally, I just want to talk about flight team appreciation. And for those folks that maybe not know what a flight team is, it's, it's, it's not an airplane, although they act with the speed of an airplane. This is where, in the case of a tragedy, and often that's usually the death of a student, a staff member, or possibly a student's family member. We have a team of professionals that come in very quickly to support students, staff, and family members. And I just want to take this time to give a big shout out to our Student Services Director, Daniel Hudson, and especially her toses, Leslie Rogers, Eli Green, Amy Baker, and Chris Damiano for their efforts. This has been a tough year for the Beaverton School District. We've had several staff members pass away. We've had students pass away. We've had spouses of our teachers and staff pass away. And there's nothing more traumatizing than the death of a child. And so when these people come in, they come in as professionals and they know exactly how to support, when to support, and where to support. And they just do an amazing job. And Beaverton's often look to for their processes and helping guide the rest of the state. So to our flight team, a big appreciation from all of us. Thank you, Chair.
Any questions of the superintendent? All right, with that, we will move on to our financial update from Mike Schofield. Mike?
Thank you, Chair Tim Chuck, members of the board, Superintendent Grodding. Appreciate the time and saving to share a little bit about the finances of the district. As Superintendent Grodding mentioned, some good news last week in the state revenue forecast. Specifically, a billion dollars more revenue in the current biennium than, than projected last. Another billion in the next biennium. And then another 1.5 billion in the 2325 biennium is now projected. So really good news on the revenue front for our state. Hopefully, we can keep the pressure on and get that funding level up to the 9.6 billion we need to maintain our current level of service. So some good news there, also some improvement in the SIA as well. We're, we're working on tracking that number down and getting you some refined numbers on the SIA at a future meeting. For the district's year-to-date activity and forecast, I turn your attention to that. No change forecasted on the expenditure side at this time. We're just now seeing some expenditures start to creep through from our hybrid model. And so we'll probably have a little bit better numbers for you next month in that front. Some improvement in the overall fund balance of the district, primarily due to the May adjustments to the state school fund for the last fiscal year as well as the current fiscal year. So a little bit of positive change in the revenue. And I'll leave it at that and take any questions you may have. Thank you, Chair Tim Chuck.
Any questions for Mike on the finances? Well, great job, Mike. And we continue to hear good news from the state and we'll continue to work with our legislators to secure the funding that we need for our students. So thank you very much. All right, with that, next up, we have return to in-person school. Deputy Superintendent Hansman, are you going to start us off?
Yep. Good evening, Board Show, Tim Chuck, School Board, and Superintendent Grodding. Glad to be here this evening. Today on our school board update, we will be, Brian Seka and John Franco will be letting us know more about the current COVID metrics along with plans for next year and plans for graduation. So Brian, you can take it away.
Thanks Ginny, thanks Chair Tim Chuck, members of the board, Superintendent Grodding. Just reiterate what Ginny said. Well, we have a quick presentation tonight, much shorter than most that you've, most that you've seen on this. Mostly good news coming, coming your way. Starting off with COVID case counts, the graph you're so familiar with. Again, I'd just like to ask you to take a look at the right-hand side of that as our numbers continue to decrease and decrease pretty rapidly. Washington County came in today at 117 cumulative cases per 100,000 residents over the past 14 days. And respectively, Multnomah County was right around 145. I share that with you in that we do not anticipate COVID case rates impacting our operations, certainly not for the rest of the year or into the summer. We would need to see something drastically change in order for that to happen. So I think that's great news. If everyone could kind of collectively knock on wood or whatever superstitions you're under, I think this could be the last time we're going to take a look at this, this, this data for a while. So I think that's great news. Thanks to our community, thanks for everyone for maintaining the, the protocols that we need to have. Good news on the vaccine front is Washington County also, as everyone saw, exceeded that 65% as of last week. So, so good news all around on this end. Just skipping ahead a little bit before we go into graduation with Dr. Franco, I just want to reiterate what Superintendent Grodding said. While health officials and Oregon, Oregon Health Authority, Oregon Department of Education continue to refine their guidance for us, continue to refine their recommendations and requirements for us, we fully anticipate opening in a situation that's much, much, much more close to normal than certainly we were in this year. That would be in-person instruction offered five days a week for all students. And like Superintendent Grodding said, the comprehensive distance learning option would be available, but it would be available through the Flex Online program and not through our neighborhood schools or any of our comprehensive secondary schools. Oregon Department of Education is preparing to release a very early draft of guidance for the fall. We're expecting that to come out sometime this week. They've admittedly, though, it won't be the final draft of the guidance. It's meant more to get it into the hands of the schools and get it into the hands of the practitioners so we can take a look and, and help refine any guidance that we need. Just a few of the pieces that they're looking, looking to get input on, looking to get feedback on, and will eventually potentially land in the guidance that we see. Just as you can see on the screen, the, the case counts and the metrics may no longer serve the purpose that we need. Minimizing the health and safety requirements that are inside the classroom. So we're looking real closely at what distancing would, would be like if there's any requirements for distancing. And certainly mask wearing, face coverings wearing will be one we want to take a look at as well. The hybrid model won't be something that's coming down from the state or wanting to, the, the department is trying to get more information about what a hybrid model could look like, I guess. And they're looking to make recommendations on potentially retiring that. And then the, the final one they're thinking about is, is that idea is when we maintain comprehensive distance learning, will it have the same requirements this year, next year as it did this year? when we maintain comprehensive distance learning, will it have the same requirements this year, next year as it did this year? If you remember, one of those requirements was that mandatory synchronous opportunity for every student every day. So that's the kind of things that we're keeping an eye on to come out of the department. Again, can't wait to welcome back students to five days in-person next school year. That's, that's where we're headed. That's what we're looking for. And it would take some pretty significant shift in things to happen for, for that to go the other way. With that, I know Dr. Franco is going to talk to us a little bit about graduation and then any of the three of us would be happy to answer questions that you have. So John, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, good evening, buddy, and thank you, Brian, for the introduction. And Don, first of all, hi, everybody. And Don, I alluded to a little bit with graduations. And, you know, we've been meeting every other week pretty consistently since February as schools have begun planning for graduations. And, and I do want to, I'm going to say it, just to recognize the planners and all this, as with anything with, with COVID and during this pandemic, we've had to adapt and adjust a number of times. And so naturally, flexibility has been the key. And so I'll just go to go ahead and go through a few of these bulleted items. So our goal for graduations is to have, was to have comparable experiences. And so, in other words, we didn't feel it was appropriate to have one school offering a in-person and another one offering a virtual or something along those lines. And so we settled on stadium graduations. As you all know, we generally have gone through UP and PSU. And so, at least in my experience here, we've never done anything in the stadium from a graduation perspective. So we're excited about that. So all of our schools, with the exception of Tumwater, or not Tumwater, with the exception of Akma and Flex and Merlot. Merlot will be having their ceremony at Merlot. Akma and Flex will be at Tumwater. Everyone else will be utilizing the comprehensive high school stadiums. And so we are very, very excited about that. We are definitely not expecting it to rain, but if it does rain, we're going to have umbrellas and our park is ready to go. So it's Oregon and we are okay with that. As I mentioned, we have been meeting every other week pretty consistently to not only collaborate, but to adapt and adjust potentially to the changing guidelines. And, and as all of you know, we had some new updates just as of last week. We are graduating in June. And so all of you do have the master copy of our June dates. If you can recall, last year for the class of 2020, we, we pushed everything back in the sense to August, pretty much. We decided, I decided just we learned so much last year and we took those learnings and applied it to this year. So we are pushing forward with the June dates. I alluded to the guidance that came out last week. We have moved in Washington County to lower risk, which means according to the, the current guidelines and the metrics, we can operate our stadiums at our outside venues according to the outdoor entertainment establishments at 50% capacity, also with the, the new guidelines via OHA. Anyone outside after school hours does not need to wear a mask. And so we are incorporating those guidelines for graduation. However, social distancing still does apply. And so that is that six feet either be, that's six feet between parties. And so I think it's important that we recognize that because, you know, I've got questions, our principals have got questions about, well, 50%. We know that you could fit this many in, you could fit that many in if social distancing didn't apply. And so people just automatically assume there was going to be this mad increase in tickets. That, that's, that's not the case because of the social distancing. And I have to say that we're really excited about this because as with anything with this year, we like to use it as a learning to be applied for next year. And, and we are seeing some very creative ideas in regards to graduation, to be able to, to not only celebrate each and every one of our students, but to, to get as many of our families in as we can. And so we're excited about that. And, and if you can't make it from a capacity perspective, all of our events are going to be livestreamed. And so the graduation dates, times, and locations link is here, but all of you do have access to that. I won't pull it up here. And that is a live doc. And so any changes that happen, happen in real time. And the last thing I would say is for graduation, and Don alluded to this earlier, is that we are doing in-person in the stadium. But as piece of that comparable experience, we, the other piece was we wanted to make sure for students who weren't comfortable that we also had some level of recognition. And so for some schools, that will be a drive-through in addition to, not for every student, for those students who are not comfortable having it in-person, or it could have been a virtual in addition to, so not in lieu of. So that is my presentation on graduation. So I think unless Ginny, you have anything else to add, I think you'd take questions if there are any.
All right, board members, anybody have any questions on whether it be return to school or graduation or anything's going on in our schools? Tom?
Thanks, Becky. I have a quick question. I've been following the COVID dashboard with the school district. And I'm wondering, do we have any cases of in-school transmission that have occurred that we, we have found yet? And then also, is there any commonality in the cases that we're finding that are cropping up here and there across the district?
Thanks, Tom. I'll, I'll take a shot at that one. I was able to check in with nurses over the past days and that, that we can tell we don't have any cases where the transmission actually occurred on our campuses, in our campus. So the first part of your question, a no to, to the best that we can tell and the best our knowledge as far as contact, you know, the precision of contact tracing. You know, as far as common themes go, it, it does appear that when we can identify who that close contact was, that the student, you know, interacted with to, to become sick. It, it seems like it's a lot of social gatherings, maybe birthday parties, that kind of stuff. That seems to be cropping up over and over again. So maybe I would generalize it as saying off-campus kind of social activity seems to be where the, where the close contact is occurring that presumably causes the, causes the infection.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah.
Really glad that our schools are safe like that and that we're not experiencing any transmission in the classroom.
Yeah, you know, and I should have ended out with a shout out and a thank you to all of our staff and all of our students for maintaining those protocols that we have in place. I think that's a testament to that they're working and a testament to just how great of a job our teachers, staff members, and our students are doing adhering to them.
Ditto. I also have another question, this is maybe more for Becky, but I just realized Flex is a new school. Has a school board member been assigned to Flex?
It has not. That will be the responsibility of the new incoming chair.
Okay. We'll have to see who covers it for graduation then.
It is covered for graduation.
Oh, excellent.
Actually, actually not yet. I think we need.
Okay, well.
In terms of a board member still has to sign up for it.
Yes, I, I believe that I, I shared with Diana that I was more than happy to take it if someone was not able to sign up for it. So we will make sure that Flex is newly represented. So any other questions from board members? Susan?
Actually, I think Ann had a comment first, no? Well, my, my question, well, one quick question about graduation. Can Diana send, resend out the link? So if there's some schools that are open, I might be able to take some, that's my quick comment. And then I am continually worried about our homeless population in our schools. And, you know, I, I, I I know it's difficult. I know it's hard to track, but I know we have a, a pretty big population of homeless students. And I, I want to make sure that somehow we're reaching out to them. I know there's, you know, I just want to, you know, again, kind of reassure myself that there's a process for this.
Thanks, Susan. I think I can maybe help just a little bit about what that process is. You know, we have a group, a group of staff members involved with the McKinney-Vento program. And so any student that's sort of already been identified, I guess, you know, and is already involved in the system, they'll stay in contact with them. And then to, to sort of serve as that maybe safety net, if you will, to, to ensure that students who are recently experiencing, you know, houselessness or recent, recently experiencing challenges in their, in their, in their stable housing. Remember, all of our schools have the behavioral health and wellness teams who are, that one of their jobs is to make sure that they're accounting for various challenges. And so we would hope that they would be able to, you know, help those students get the services they need specific to the, the houseless or homeless challenge that they may be having.
Wait, hold on, Brian, thank you for that. I guess really my point is, I think it's like a bigger question and then, then what I'm making it out to be. And I, again, I just, I'm concerned about that population. And I, I recognize that we have a school district that embraces and helps, but I just, I'm concerned that there are kids that are falling through the cracks, not just homeless students, but all sorts of students. And want to make sure that we do the best job possible that way. I know it's not easy.
So, and I'll just say, Susan, I think Diana just sent out to all of us maybe late last week an update of all the graduations and where there were still some spots. So, but Diana can follow back up on that after, I think it's been updated recently. So, and Ann, I'm sorry, I didn't see that you had a comment.
All right. I, I just wanted to both to thank the, the team for the ongoing effort to adjust and adapt. And I particularly want to call out the experiment that we're doing with stadium graduations this year. I am excited to see that get tested out. The gift of having graduation in your neighborhood, I think, will be something that I'll be interested to see how families respond. But I think it's a good thing that we're testing. And I'm, as a parent of a graduate, glad that we're having this celebration. Can't wait to bring my beach chair. So that's graduation ever.
Agreed. That's my comment, John. What, what do our, what do our typical stadiums hold? What, you know, if, if they were totally full, what do we usually say that they hold?
Well, usually, if you're talking about just the stands, generally home stands are around 2,000 and visitor stands are 500. But the trick is because it's, we're, we're applying max occupancy. We're using the fields, we're using the tracks to get that number. And we're taking 50% of that, which will give us our actual capacity for the entire stadium. So it just depends, it varies. But I can tell you this much is that our teams are being extremely creative and you heard Ann allude to it. It's, it's going to be awesome. Like, there's no question in my mind, very similar to last year. How, you know, people, it wasn't the same as a regular graduation, but I would say that many people enjoyed the intimate nature of a, of a drive-through. They enjoyed at least that piece of it. I think that this will be another part that people will enjoy, whether you're in, in the bleachers or even on the field with your graduate. It's, 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 it's a learning that I think we can take, take place in the future. And I have to say this, I think that this is going to change how graduations look in the future traditionally. And that'll be for the better. And so we're excited about that.
I bet you can get a good 10 people on each goalpost.
At least.
I have a question, Brian, about our summer experience. And so I, I know we, we've already talked about, we've, we've got someone, Don mentioned Stacy, that's dedicated to that. Just wondering, are we going to, have we already set the conditions? Are we going to be following the same guidelines or will they be able to be a little bit different guidelines? Because the classes will be smaller, but just how we're, how we're doing school now, will, will the summer experience be a little bit, set up a little bit differently than how we're doing in school now?
I don't, I'm not sure if my answer is going to be pretty predictable, but as of right now, the same guidelines would apply for during the school day. But we'll keep a close eye on what, what changes as the case rates continue to fall drastically and vaccination rates continue to increase. So we'll just have to keep looking as, as, you know, additional guidance and additional pieces come out. But as far as kind of protocols are concerned, are during the school day, protocols remain the same.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Teaching and Learning Department? Well, thank you so much. We're looking forward to graduations. I think it's probably a highlight for all of us as school board members to participate in that. Will be especially rewarding for Ann as she has her own son graduating. And that's always a thrill when you get to participate with your own child. So anyway, thank you for that update on all the end of, end of school year. It's hard to believe it's the end of May. So thank you all. Okay, with that, we're going to go on to discussion items. First item, very important, our social science curriculum adoption. And Dr. Seka, I think we're, we're starting off with you again. Or are we talking, starting, starting off with the deputy?
No, no, that was, that was me. That was me, Becky. I'm sorry. I just had one more. I had an item in between us on our agenda. So I'm pulling up, I'm pulling up the presentation.
The SIA, I'm very sorry. I, I apologize. I'm just so excited about the social science work. I am very sorry. The SIA is very important to us. So yes, get the update on the Student Investment Act.
Okay, sounds good. I'll go back on mute.
Okay, good evening again and glad to be here. David Williams and I are going to share an update about the student investment account as of right now. So I will start by, by giving an overview of kind of where we've been. It's hard to believe that it was a year ago that we were celebrating and the success of the Student Success Act. And as we remember, it was approved by the Oregon Legislature in 2019, which was funded by the corporate activities tax. Now, the Student Investment Act, again, as you remember, it directs weighted per student funding to all school districts. And so what our district needed to do last year was to submit this, the Student Investment Act grant, our plans to ODE for approval. During that time, we went through many processes to make that happen. And again, it's just to refresh your memory, a year ago, we had four buckets that we were using to kind of figure out how we were going to spend this funding. And the first one was looking at reducing class size, which, as you know, is one of the most important areas. We also looked at well-rounded education, instructional time, and health and safety. And with all of those four categories, we needed to make sure that the applicants must meet one or both of the following purposes, as you'll see on this slide. One was meeting the students' mental and behavioral health needs, as Susan reminds us of each time, that that is an area that we need to make sure that we are investing in. And the second one, to make sure that we are increasing students' academic achievement and reducing disparities for our focal populations. So we took a look at those four areas last year and we did some extensive work around that. We formed a planning team that Susan and Leanne took part in as well to develop what the processes were going to be for the Student Success Act. And we knew that we needed to make sure that we got as many voices and engagement as possible. We also had a plan for how we were going to communicate out to the community, communicate to our stakeholders. With that, we had huge, broad community engagement times. We called them convenings, where we met with some of our partners. We being one of them, the FE, the BBPU, all of those gave input and suggestions as to how we were going to spend this additional funding for our kids. We also, our MLD, led by Toshiko Maresio, did some focal engagements for all of our languages in our district and had small group feedback that helped develop the plan. We then got many of our educators in the room, along with our administrators. We then got many of our educators in the room, along with our administrators, to plan out what that would look like and where we would make sure that we invested in those four buckets and really reached the needs of all of our kids in our district. So in that original plan, we came up last spring and we were excited. We did a celebration with you that we came up with what our most important investments were would be. That total SIA budget came to 32,278,600, which was a huge number to be dealing with, especially after years of reducing some of these areas. So as you remember, our we had top areas in these activities that we planned. The first one really was in our class size and our equity-based classroom investment. That probably was the biggest cost in all of these areas and really made sure that we weighted our student enrollment with our schools so that our schools of poverty would get more in terms of class size reduction. So that significant dollar investment, use that equity formula to make sure that we were lowering class size at our high-poverty schools. And you'll notice, we also made a big investment there in our student behavior, health, and wellness areas, which will you will see additional social workers and counselors and more support for those teams in each school, along with our equity training and supports for staff were really our main focuses in that plan. So I'm going to have David kind of show you where we have moved. So going into this year, as you know, with the pandemic, we had some significant changes we needed to look at, and we needed to go from there. So David, you can reiterate the big ticket items on that original SIA plan and then talk about where we needed to reduce as well.
Yeah, thanks, Ginny. And you've seen this, many of you have seen this slide. This is the unfortunate reality of what happened after you all approved the plan last year. The parts in red are the only things we were able to end up doing as the resulting economic collapse dramatically reduced the funding in the SIA plan. So just kind of grounding in that. And we really want to make sure we're grounding this whole plan development in the work that we did last year around community engagement. So now we look forward to this plan renewal going forward. Talk a little bit about what we did. We did some community input work in January, February, reviewed the feedback with our diverse stakeholders, meeting with a variety of the groups that we had met with last year and reengaged some of those partners in that drafting work. Made some necessary adjustments here. We're presenting it to you all. And then this last bullet point is really the key here. Given the dynamic that districts have all been through, the Department of Ed adjusted their rules for this renewal. And so long as a district through a a limited round of engagement, so long as a district was not planning on making substantive programmatic changes to their plan, but merely allocation changes, that no for no additional board approval was necessary. So we wanted to make sure we present this to you so you have a depth of understanding about what's being submitted to the department. But this will not be, there will not be needed board action. This will, of course, be embedded in the budget that does come to you for final approval before the end of the fiscal year. So just to get a sense of where we're going with that. Again, with this, these are the questions we asked the community back in January and February about the plan, got a lot of really excellent feedback. All of it pointed to, look, the ideas we had before are even more needed now coming out of the pandemic than they were at the time. So just to get you to the plan again, our our plan is our core principles here, equity-focused instructional investments, our student success teams or behavioral health and wellness teams, and then equity-focused systems improvements using the funds in there. Just overlaying this with the board-approved plan from last year, so you have a sense of where we are going forward. It is slightly reduced funding based on the slow ramp back of the corporate activities tax. And I would note, this will be adjusted upwards slightly prior to being submitted to the Department of Ed, as the last quarterly revenue forecast did show an increase in the projected revenues of the corporate activities tax. We're waiting on final numbers from the Department of Ed, which is why they're not incorporated here. But just to give you a sense of where the the majority of our investments are, again, you know, a little more than a third of the investment in the K-12 equity-based classroom investment. And then the added 4.3 makes it just about half of the investment is in that class size, evidence-based class size supports. And I think really highlighting this as a core tenet of our plan, really looking at the SIA as a catalyst to redo the way we staff our schools using an equity-based staffing distribution formula is a really critical approach for us. A few of the zeros, just highlighting there where because of the additional limited resources, we simply couldn't fund everything. I would note that we are also in this dance with the state school fund appropriation from the state, which of course, right now stands at $9.3 billion. We're hoping that that will increase. But at $9.3 billion state school fund is still a reduction of revenue to the district and and therefore, looking at the student investment account as well as the sum of the federal funds to make sure that we're mindfully bridging the gap to next biennium as well and the potential added reductions in that biennium as we as we roll forward. And you all are aware of that from the Budget Committee meetings as well. I would note on our equity-based systems improvements, continuing to fund the HR equity talent acquisition position, adding a second equity administrator in our Department of Equity and Inclusion, as well as robust investments in the Center for Educational Equity trainings as well. There's just a clean version of that, just so you can see what would end up being submitted to the Department of Ed. Again, a $26.7 million investment. Again, we we see that go up some amount, you know, in the same billion dollar, not not a not a insignificant amount. And we'll adjust some of the investments before submitting that for approval to the Department of Ed. I would note that some of the reductions made, pardon me for going back a slide, some of the reductions made, particularly some of the behavioral health and wellness teamwork is is to some degree, being balanced with investments being made out of the federal funding sources as well. So while this looks like a really significant hit to the behavioral health and wellness teams, the actual ramp up would not look like this level of reduction. There there are some balancing that we're looking to do there. The other one I would note, just because I know it off the top of my head, is the middle school extended programming. I know we're looking to use some of the federal funds to balance some of that work as well. So we're trying to really maximize and braid together these different funding streams that we have right now. And again, to mindfully bridge that gap to future biennial, when those revenue sources won't necessarily always be there. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Susan? Maybe I have a hard time unmuting. David, this is just, you know, I appreciate all the work and I, you know how focused I am on behavioral mental health. But the money that's coming for the federal government is not, you know, is kind of a I realize it might be over the next three years, but it's not really sustainable. So, you know, my concern, or at least I'm bringing it up as, you know, something to think about is how we fund it ongoing, if, you know, these are one-time dollars.
I I think, Susan, I think you're absolutely right. And again, as I, as I talk about braiding together these revenue streams for now with an understanding of where we're going to be three, four years from now, when they, when some of them, like the federal funds, begin to tail back. I don't have an answer for you how we're going to get there. But I appreciate you keeping that on the radar screen and 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 keeping us focused on that, because I think that is going to be a critical question in, say, the 23, 25 biennium. Again, if the legislature is unwilling to step up and actually provide adequate supports for that as well.
My question is very similar. I was just looking at that, you know, went down almost 50% on that. But yeah, the Estor funds, so it'd be interesting to know, is it like, are we still pretty much whole there? Because we're getting back into school and that's going to be obviously real high need of people away from school for a long time, you know, maybe more than we needed before, you know. So it'd be interesting to see if we're still whole, the Estor funds there, at least until they debridged, until he said, until the revenue start increasing and you're collecting almost a full 32 million a year or more over time. So that's kind of my question is, maybe it's Mike, you know, his modeling, he does a good job on the modeling on those things.
Well, and you know, Eric, I appreciate it. You know, we certainly were the proposed allocation for this next biennium of the corporate activities tax is still on the ramp up. It's not back to to the sort of 100% of what was anticipated. This last quarterly quarterly revenue forecast was, of course, phenomenal from a projection standpoint. And I think we're we're looking to see it ramp up even a little bit more. And that, you know, maybe not exactly for this coming biennium, but certainly the biennium out. And that should give us sort of capacity space within that SIA. But I think it's the same question Susan asked is, as as we get three or four years down the road, we're going to have to be, I mean, and we can't wait till three or four years from now. But we do have to understand where's the unbraiding that happens as we move past these one-time infusions of dollars. I also think it's fair for us to put on the radar screens of policymakers that they're asking us to make really significant investments and services to kids, that at some point, they're going to pull back the funding for that. Or is there an opportunity to change the paradigm of the funding provided to schools so that we step up and meet a new level of demand for kids? So I think we're kind of in a critical moment the next couple of years as we as we sort of show cause.
Donna?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, you know, although we were excited about when the SIA passed initially, and then we got the rug pulled out from under us when COVID hit and everything kind of went sideways, I'm just really pleased that we are, you know, sticking to our guns and recognizing that the investments that we plan on making as far as, you know, the equity-based instruction and also the class size. And it looks like we're going to be putting back dyslexia. Those are all wonderful, those are all wonderful investments that'll be good overall for our kids. And I think that they will be in place long enough for us to demonstrate and show their their value, because we're just going to see, I'm hopeful and optimistic, you know, such a big turn, turn, turnaround that the legislature is going to use us as a test case. And hopefully, we'll we'll get funding consistently as opposed to erratically.
Leanne?
Um, my comments are in line with Donna's. I just wanted to comment that I'm delighted with the recent revenue forecast and that it really was a an uptick in our capital, our cat tax, and brings us additional SIA funds. It's exciting to be able to look forward to these funds each year. I agree, you know, it was disappointing last year, but to see this uptick and think, wow, this could be ongoing and growing is really delightful. It's really been a long time coming for us to be able to make these strategic investments. And I wanted to just thank everybody. This is really important work for our students. I truly believe with all my heart that this is what's best for our kids and for their overall success. So great job.
Thank you, Leanne. And I want to give a special thanks to both Leanne and Susan for spending the last two years on our planning team with us and really providing really valuable insight to the work that that just made this a better product in the end. And then the side note, I would say, you know, our plan was one of the few that came out of the Department of Ed last year without recommendations for adjustments. It was straight approved. And and I think it just speaks to the volume of work we did. We were often viewed as a as an exemplar in that process. And I'll be the first one to say, we learned a lot of lessons about how we can do this better next time on the authentic engagement part, when we're able to get back to sort of a full in-person engagement model next time around.
Tom?
I think most of my question was answered, but maybe a little more on the technical side. I'm wondering what percentage of the funds that we would expect in a normal year to be getting for the SIA are we getting next year? And then how much of that is being backfilled by Estor funds? To kind of understand the tapering, right, is as the SIA goes up and the Estor goes away, are those things coextensive? And we've got a pretty good shot at maintaining our programs, or is there going to need to be a big advocacy push in year two or three to make up for some of the gap there? And that may be on what can be answered right now, but that's where my line goes as I look at this is, you know, is that the room that's left on the SIA big enough to grab what the Estor funds are doing right now? Or are we going to need to make a big push to try and keep some of those supports for our kids?
Yeah, it's a great question, Tom. I think we're going to have to map out for you on the behavioral health and wellness teams. That's really the lever spot. But they're just thinking long term, that actually there's two lever spots. One is those behavioral health and wellness teams and the degree to which some of those services are being funded by Estor funds. And we can map that out for you and we'll we'll get that. The other is the class size investments. While we're using it to be a catalyst right now, I think long term, you'd want to see some of that investment transfer into the general fund, which would give you more space in the SIA for more of those wraparound type services. So long term, I think that's the the push, if you will, federal funds back into SIA for some of that behavioral health and wellness work, and then SIA funds back into general fund for the class size investments. But, you know, we're definitely at a delicate dance point when it comes to how the state's viewing it. And, you know, to Leanne's point, I think, you know, we really saw that SIA is a watershed, that the corporate activities tax watershed moment. And right now, I'll tell you, in the legislature, we're fighting tooth and nail to make sure that the legislature doesn't view the SIA as a backfill for an underfunded state school fund, because that was never the intent. But it's off, it's a common refrain in the Capitol of, look, schools are flush with cash right now. We just passed the the SSA last time around, you guys are good to go. And that that's simply not the argument that we had two years ago. You have to fund the base, and then this is where added services needed for kids. So, you know, we're we're kind of in this in this fragile moment with this, with the advocacy around this.
That's a great point. And some point in the future, it would be very interesting to see if we have increased in relation to the QEM. I kind of use that as my North Star for trying to determine what our kids should be getting in terms of education funding. And the SIA, the best I could tell was maybe half of the way to to getting all the way there, if you look at that delta between where we've been and where the QEM had us.
Right.
Anyway, thank you. And big thank you to Susan and Leanne for all of your work on this. Thanks, guys, for representing us.
All right, we will look forward to see what the outcome is, and we'll hope that the legislature keeps their word and and that we're able to fund and those commitments that we made and all the work that was done by everyone that will we're able to keep those commitments. So thank you for all the hard work, everybody that was a part of that committee. So, all right, now, without further ado, we are going to be talking about the social science curriculum adoption phase one. And will we start with the Dr. Seika this time?
Thanks, Chair Tim Chuck. Thanks, board members, Superintendent Grodding, everyone listening. Brian Seika, Administrator for Curriculum Instruction Assessment. We have a great team here with us today to go through a presentation on what is the first reading of phase one of our social sciences adoption. Well, we'll just ask team members here is when it comes to your slide to go ahead and introduce yourselves and we'll just, we'll jump right in. I just wanted to remind what the board charged us to do. Boy, going on almost a year ago now, as we were charged with convening a project team, and the project team was to put forth a reported recommendation on adopting state standards through the Beaverton process of the quality curriculum cycle. Just a quick reminder of that quality curriculum cycle is we owe you about seven pieces of information embedded in either discussion or in reports. Those include descriptions of our programs. Those include big philosophy statements or what we call position paper. They include what we call the best practices. Those are the instructional techniques that are used in alignment with the 5D or within our instructional framework. We also are going to talk a lot about instructional resources or those materials that our teachers and our students will use to acquire, acquire the the learnings embedded in those learning targets. And then those, of course, are related standards. We'll talk a lot about professional development and happy to answer any questions around budget implications that you have. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brad Parker to give you a few more details.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Hi, everyone. My name's Brad Parker. I'm one of the social science TOSSAs. Honored to be here tonight, along with a couple colleagues from our team, to share some work that we are really, really excited about, that we think will have a really powerful impact in our district. So this slide just kind of is an overview of the workflow process that Dr. Seeca just alluded to. The board report, the phase one board report is a result of collaboration and an interactive process that starts with our K-12 teacher cadre. Um, we have two really strong members of our team tonight from the cadre that'll be joining us to share some of the work. And all the work that began with the cadre would then go to our project team, um, to receive feedback, constructive critique. It would then go back to the teacher cadre for those revisions, come back to the project team. And it was all voted on to basically populate the board report that we're taking a peek at this evening. So phase one, uh, what we're looking at tonight of the social sciences adoption has a couple of major core parts. Uh, that is a K-12 position paper outlining the overall philosophy and vision of the program. K-12 instructional best practices in the social sciences, sixth through eighth grade learning targets, sixth through eighth grade core instructional resources. And then sixth through eighth grade professional development and implementation planning. Phase two of our work, uh, which will resume right at the beginning of next year in twenty one, twenty-two. Will include more of a focus on K-five as well as nine, twelve. So kind of some of the similar elements of learning targets, instructional resources, PD plans and implementation plans. What we're also going to include though, is a really intentional additional focus on K-12 core materials and resources. With an intentionality for dual language and special education. We'll also be looking at supplementary instructional resources in addition to those core resources. And that will be for all K-12 programs as well as sixth through eighth grade. And just a note that supplementary materials follow the same process in an adoption as core resources.
Hi, everybody. My name is Matt Highfield. I'm a social studies K-12 TOSA. And it's a privilege to be here tonight to talk to you about our adoption. I think it's fair to say that for both phases of the adoption, that the K-12 social study, social science standards integrated with ethnic studies. Provide a really important framework for what we're doing. The state has been working on these standards for many, many months and they finally adopted them in February two thousand and twenty-one, just a few months ago. If you look on the right, you'll see that some of the themes from the two thousand and eighteen standards were expanded. For example, legacy of impression, of oppression, histories of different peoples, resistance. Some of these themes that were in the two thousand and eighteen standards were, um, accentuated. And an example of some of those standards that are vertically aligned are on your left with some civics and government standards. And new standards are in blue. And so you might be asking yourself, so what did the state standards have to do with, um, our district, Beaverton School District? Well, Beaverton School District learning targets are, are based on the standards. And I think an easy way to frame it is, um, just know that, that the standards adopted by the state of Oregon are the curriculum. That's, that's what we're teaching. And the standards certainly inform our learning targets. And that is what teachers and students use to show, show progress. The original language of the standards, for example, in eighth grade is, is on the left. Uh, what our teacher cadre did is worked hard to make student-friendly supporting targets, uh, with I can statements. For example, I can identify the rights that individual people have under the constitution. This makes these standards more accessible to, to all of our students.
Hello, my name is Marcelo Libardi. I am a dual language teacher. Um, I teach kindergarten at Alamo Hubert Park and I will be talking, I will be sharing about the heart of the social sciences program, the position paper. We believe a transformative social sciences education through a culturally relevant approach and a culturally responsive curriculum and practices invites our students to explore oneself, community, nation and world. Practice even engagement by exploring historical and current events and issues from multiple perspectives. Acknowledge and learn, and learn through histories, contributions, resilience and resistance and perspectives of many racial, ethnic and social groups. We believe a transformative social sciences education helps students develop into critical consumers, producers of knowledge and future leaders. And calls our educators and schools to believe, belong, grow and thrive in our dynamic and diverse community. Now Brad is going to talk about best practices.
Thank you, Marcella. Our team is really, really excited about the position paper and the vision that that cast. We are equally as excited about the K-12 best practices. And this was a collaborative effort that went through multiple, multiple revisions and enhancements. Um, and we wanted it really phrased under that notion that it was written by and for K-12 social sciences teachers across the district. Um, it's aligned to the five dimensions of teaching and learning, which is part of the University of Washington that is used already in BSD. And that has five big elements. So what our teachers did is took those research-based practices and enhanced them in a lens of social sciences. To bring some of the ideas of not only our standards, but our position paper to life across all of our K-12 classrooms. Um, so those five areas are ranging from purpose to class environment and culture, curriculum and pedagogy, student engagement and assessment for student learning. Part of that, as Dr. Seeca opened with, includes instructional resources. And I'm going to build on an idea that Matt kind of used. So helpful framing to understand the role of resources in an adoption with the Oregon standards as the curriculum. Uh, the standards informing the Beaverton learning targets, instructional resources are really what's there. Materials used in classes that help teachers address the standards and eventually assess the targets. So phase one, what we're looking at tonight, the common middle school experience really drove our priority of middle school this year. And the phase one report has a recommendation of discovery education platform as a core instructional resource for grade six, eight. However, it should be noted that phase two also includes, and that'll be next school year, additional K-12 core instructional resources with an intentionality for dual language and special education, but also additional K-12 supplemental instructional materials, which also will include grade six through eight.
And we just wanted to show you that our selection process was pretty arduous. We had four criteria, um, two from the state, the standards, and then Oregon Department of Education's own criteria. We had our BSD selection criteria for instructional materials, as you can see. And as well as we took recommendations from our teacher cadre, what they thought was important in a resource adoption. We began with eleven, um, and start instructional material providers. We narrowed that down to three. After, after more discussion, we chose two finalists to do pilots. And that meant, you know, um, teachers, teaching with these platforms in the classroom, integrated with the technology that we currently have. And after pilots and, and feedback and public viewing, we, uh, went to the project team. And both, both finalists had a chance to present to the project team as well. And discovery education was chosen. As you can see, the project team vote was twenty-seven to one.
So I, if it's okay, Matt, Anne had a question on this chart. Is it okay to take field of question now?
Sure.
Okay, Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, so I was just, uh, trying to understand when I reviewed the materials, uh, sort of how things went from the first stage through and what the intersection is from, uh, what you started with, with, uh, at least on the copy of this chart that was in the packet. There were several of the curriculum that had been asterisked as ODE state approved. Um, and some weren't, and I, I just didn't understand enough about like, where does ODE approval come into this process? And how do we use that guidance and, and what, uh, what would guided the project team in moving in through this narrowing of the funnel? So I was just wondering if you could give me a little bit more background on that.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to do that. And Brad, feel free to, to jump in and fill in where, where I might miss. You know, the, the criteria, we, like I said, we had to make sure that, uh, the materials would speak to the Oregon social science standards. And not, not all of them did very well. We also had to make sure that they integrated, um, you know, with our, with our current, uh, technology platforms. And, and not all, not all of them did. We took into account the BSD selection criteria and some of them were stronger than others. As you can guess, uh, a platform that had PDFs in a folder was, was not particularly strong. As opposed to a platform that was interactive, that, you know, that had, um, various tools, which we'll, we'll, we'll talk about in the next slide. You know, some, um, it, it takes, uh, a certain amount of time to, you know, to be, uh, approved by the state of Oregon. There's a process, some of the older publishing companies, they've been approved forever. And, and, you know, some of the, the newer companies, um, you know, are, are in that process.
And I can just add to that, Anne, thank you for the question, um, in regards to those asterisks. So as, as Matt was just mentioning, uh, that process was actually done for the two thousand and eighteen standards. So while a lot of those initial very big companies that are primarily textbook-based approaches and/or even online textbooks were approved. They did not, when you looked at the two thousand and twenty-one standards, really have a lot to offer in those realms. Um, and when you looked at even some of the ODE criteria that was used in the two thousand and eighteen standards, there was a really, really deep weakness. And a lot of those in regards to teaching with and through multiple perspectives. As traditional textbook-based approach, approaches tend to not do that at the level that our team and that these new standards call for. So that really, using those new standards to guide our work really helped us get a lot more specific with what we were looking for.
So I guess I just have a follow-up just because, uh, this, I just want to make sure I understand. So, uh, if we approve the discovery education, then will we send it back for approval from ODE? Or is, is it just sort of, we, we say it satisfies the standards and so we can implement it? What?
Yeah. Uh, Brad, Matt's heard interrupt, and I think I can help with that one. Um, really the requirement is that you review the list that is approved by ODE. You're compelled to review it, but you're not compelled to adopt from that list. So, um, no, it won't automatically place discovery like on the approved list. But, um, essentially what we are saying is it meets the criteria outlined in, in policy IIA.
Thanks for helping me understand.
Okay, uh, hello, everyone. My name is Maximilian Battison. I'm the seventh grade humanities teacher at Raleigh Hills. And I kind of building off what Brad and Matt talked about. Here's some of the, um, the highlights of Discovery Ed that we kind of wanted to emphasize. It's a pretty extensive list. I can do my best to summarize it, not just read off the list. But, um, first and foremost, um, accessibility. Discovery Ed was the only resource that actually had authentic Spanish translation. Uh, everything else was relied on, um, Google Translate, which is not perfect. But in Discovery Ed, they actually will translate materials and instruction, which is fantastic. Uh, it also has like accessibility, a lot of the resources can, you can translate it. You can also pick two different reading levels, which is fantastic. Um, we're really excited about possibility of, uh, collaborating and having PD opportunities with, uh, Dr. Holly about culturally responsive teaching, which would be fantastic. And then, um, as I was piloting, uh, the program, I was very excited about the resources. It's not just textbook, um, you know, there are primary resources, there are channels, there's videos, there's multiple interactives, perspectives, there's graphic organizers, uh, which is fantastic. So it wasn't just, we're going to read this text and that's it. And then, uh, from a lesson planning standpoint, uh, a lot of their lessons are built off the five Es. So engage, explore, explain, elaborate and evaluate, uh, which is really, um, truly great as a teacher to already have a nice structured lesson plan. However, there was always options for how I could extend lessons or how I could give options for students to have more, uh, creative ways to demonstrate their learning. There was often like, you know, sometimes three to five suggestions of how they can go a little bit deeper. And then to show their, uh, learning in different ways, which is fantastic. And then last but not least, um, again, it's very structured, uh, units. If you're a first year teacher or if you're transferring to a new grade level, it'd be very easy to hit the ground running, uh, by having a nice structured plan that you can build off of. It's a really good building block. Obviously there's resources that we would like to add, uh, to make it even stronger. But, um, Discovery Ed has also been very, uh, great to work with. They've been very responsive to our questions, ideas, but also concerns about things that we really want as a district. And, uh, they would definitely be listening to, um, at what we're hoping to create. So thank you. Then Brian, what would you?
Thank you. Thanks everyone for all your contributions. I'll just wrap it up with just a reminder that this is not the end of our adoption process. As, as we transition out of phase one into phase two, um, it really is a focus on, uh, K-five and nine, twelve. Much of the same that's included in your report now. And then again, additional K-12 instructional, core instructional resources that are specifically designed to support our teachers and students, um, in our dual language and our special education programs. And then K-12, um, adopted supplemental materials. Again, like, uh, Dr. Goldie Muhammad tells us, there's no perfect curriculum. We intend to give teachers a wide variety of resources to be able to meet the instructional needs and meet the academic needs of the standards in the curriculum. So, uh, school board, with that, um, we would love to hear your questions and comments on anything you would like included in the report after this first reading. We'll make sure to have that to you before the second reading. And we're also happy to answer any questions, uh, right now that you have.
Well, thank you very much for that. I see Donna, you have a question?
I really just have a comment I'd like to make. So, uh, I just wanted to say thank you, Becky and Superintendent Grodding and staff and teachers and, uh, parents and the community. And I just wanted to say that the social studies adoption answers the question of which groups and histories should be included in the social studies and civics curriculum. Our shared history is what students should learn. How can we understand our history without understanding it through the lens of race too? We can't get away from the fact that we do have a racist history. The assumption that addition of ethnic studies to social studies curriculum is only about people of color and about oppression is a mistake. It's another way to teach the concepts of equity and justice. This is no different than the discussion students have about women's role and rights in our country. This adoption makes social studies relevant and real for students, which is what social studies and civics are supposed to do. Social studies provides a critical lens to examine and contextualize what is happening right now and why it's happening. We are preparing students to be informed citizens and competitive job seekers by instilling in them strong research, writing and oral skills. Combined with the nuanced understanding of the complexities inherited, inherent in US society. Beaverton students will be uniquely positioned to enter into a workplace that is more diverse than ever. And where issues of race are more relevant and fraught with potential difficulties than at any time in recent past. They will be the persons that have the answers, team players that know how to get along. They will be the one asking the questions that no one else is asking, but that we all need to ask. What a better way to prepare our students for the twenty-first century. Thank you, Oregon Legislature for passing ethnic studies legislation. Thank you, State of Oregon Department of Education for adopting these standards. And thank you, Beaverton School District for implementing them. I just want to thank everybody who, who worked on this project for all of their efforts. I really appreciate it and I know that at the end of the day, our students will benefit.
Thank you, Donna. Um, Susan, I see you have a comment?
Well, I, I have to say that Donna pretty much said everything I would have said, but much more eloquent. But I do want to make beautiful Donna, just beautiful. And, um, thank you for those words. I am so excited about this curriculum. And I want to thank, uh, both Brad and Matt and the whole, um, cadre for the very, very, very hard work and very intense work. I can tell you, they took it very seriously and, um, continued to take it very seriously and. And certainly, I am excited about all of our students being represented in this history, in these social studies and the social science. So Donna, once again, thank you so very much for your comments. Very eloquent.
Thanks, Susan, and thank you for serving on the project team and for doing the work with, with everyone. So thank you for representing the board on, on the project team. Leanne?
Thank you. I have two questions. One is in terms of the community viewing. Was it, I know it happened over online. Is it possible to tell how much was viewed, how many people viewed? Was it even looked at? Is there any way to track that?
Leanne, thanks for the question. And Matt or Brad, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe we can tell how much was viewed, like an individual come up as a, you know, a single person. I don't think we can know how, you know, how much they navigated the website. Some of the feedback was, you know, is the, if you were to go and just log into the website, it can appear to be just a collection of just a lot of resources. There's a separate kind of a, kind of a playbook that you can almost get into and look at, which kind of gives you more of that teacher perspective. We don't know how, if our community was able to engage into that book or not. We are able to share how many people filled out the feedback form. We're not able to say how many people actually, actually logged in. And we can get those numbers for you that we have though before the, before the second reading.
That'd be great. My other question was specifically as I was reading through all of the, the pages. It appeared that the curriculum we did not choose had something, some sort of dyslexic settings. My question is, did, does the curriculum that we did choose have the same? I couldn't tell.
Yeah, Leanne, it does. It has a pretty extensive feature actually for dyslexia.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great job.
Thanks.
Tom?
Well, I don't have a lot to add after Donna's beautiful comments. Thanks, Donna. You said a lot of what I was thinking, but much better than I could. But one thing that stood out for me when I was reading the position paper is this quote or statement. In the Beaverton School District, we believe that transformative K12 social sciences education and our students can be part of the change that leads to a more just and equitable community and world. And I thought that was just a very powerful statement and one that I saw supported again and again in the materials that were presented to us. And I feel very proud to be a part of a school district that is looking to adopt this curriculum. This is amazing work. And thank you to everybody on the project team because I know that that takes many, many hours from people's time to put this together. I'm very excited to see this. This is such, I think back on the, the social studies curriculum I got when I was in high school about 20 years ago, and to see this just makes me smile. This is such a major change and so, such an improvement. So thank you for all your work.
Ann?
Yeah, I just had a follow up question. It was mentioned tonight, and then I saw it in the materials as well. I was just wondering if you could provide a little bit more information about what's envisioned with the partnership with Dr. Holly?
I'm happy to start us off. So Discovery has had a partnership with Dr. Chocky Holly, who's published some really, really strong work on culturally and linguistically responsive teaching for several years. And part of the potential of that partnership would be for our staff to work directly, likely through Zoom, but to learn with and from Dr. Holly and his framework, not only in terms of culturally responsive pedagogy, but also content and how the two can kind of come together. And I think that excited our team a lot. I think we, we saw this year, Dr. Seeca referenced the work of Dr. Goldie Muhammad, who worked with our K5, and I know a couple of board members were able to go. And that to me was a transformational moment for our district to reach out to scholars, especially scholars of color in the field, and invite them to come in and lead our staff as, as we go after this vision of becoming an anti-bias, anti-racist school district. So that was a big plus for our team, that partnership with Dr. Holly. And Discovery was able to actually point to specific things in their content that Dr. Holly pointed to and enhanced, even in terms of language, of how certain groups were referred to throughout history. So I think that showed some of the ongoing kind of evolution of how we view history. And also, as Donna really beautifully articulated, the complexity and nuance as we strive towards that more just and equitable world, but also as we evolve our teaching. And I think being able to have access to strong professional development from a scholar in the field was a really, really attractive thing to our team.
It's exciting to see so much focus on getting our staff well up to speed so that they can do this material the justice that it deserves and that our students will be able to feel the same passion for it that I know this project team had. So, and great that we can access some of that over Zoom. You know, however, however, we can get the most people to it the fastest. I think that's great.
So any other comments, questions? I have just a couple of comments. First of all, in the, one of the most important tasks, responsibilities that we have as board members is adopting curriculum for, for our students. And it is something that we take very seriously because we know it has a deep effect on how our students learn. And in the six years that I've been on the school board, I will have to say, I think this has been one of the most thorough presentations I have seen as far as, from a position paper to the way that it was put together, the thoughtfulness that was put together, that we come from a district with a variety of perspectives. And taking that, especially when it comes to social science, where it is very hard, even at the state level, to recognize what is it that we want our students to be able to know about social science? Is it just dates? Is it just being able to just remember historical figures? You know, it is being able to incorporate that. And we've seen such great learning from our current social science teachers with how they adapt. I just got invited to something at Sunset High School about reconstruction, and they're doing it as a museum that the students have put together. So they're using their creativity to present, I think, any way that we can incorporate different ways for our students to get engaged in history, in social sciences, that it's a win for all of us. So I hope that we will get more engagement from our community. I'm glad that this is something that was put together by our teachers, for our teachers. And the only last thing that I would impart to our, our team, I think the real key here, now that we've done the work, is making sure that we provide the support and scaffolding and professional development to our teachers so that we are able to implement and roll this out in the way that it deserves. But I look, I'm looking forward to our middle school students to, to be able to try out this curriculum first and then look forward to the second, second phase. But, but job well done to the, to the team. And thank you for all of your hard work and your thoughtful presentation. Okay, with that, we're going to move into a long range facility plan. And Dr. Me, you gonna kick us off here?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Board Chair, as well as Superintendent Grodding. As you see on your agenda, there's four topics coming to you this evening from our facilities team. You're not going to have to see me four different times for introductions here. So I'm going to do this just upfront here. The first topic is our long range facility plan, and Steve Sparks will be the lead there. We'll follow that with our bond accountability committee report. And Josh will be sharing that information with, via Brian Kennedy, who is our chair of the, of the bond accountability committee. The third topic is program reserves, and Aaron Boyle will be taking the lead on that topic as well. And then finally, Sato boundary adjustments. Steve Sparks will take the lead there. As you received information in your board report, our intent was to be able to front load as much as we possibly could for your information so that you could synthesize that, develop questions that you may have. So you're not going to get lengthy presentations this evening from us. We are here to answer questions. We'll have some brief comments as opening for each one of these. And so we'll go ahead and start with Steve and the long range facility plan.
Good evening, Chair Tim Chuck, board members, and Superintendent Grodding. For the record, my name is Stephen Sparks. And we've prepared for you this evening a proposed long range facilities plan. And we are recommending that you have a discussion this evening and move to adopt the long range facilities plan at your June meeting. So the proposed plan that we have for you here this evening meets all the requirements of ORS 195.110 as outlined in our staff report. We suggest that the plan does provide the board and the district appropriate and comprehensive guidance for the next 10 years. We also have included a section looking beyond that 10 year period, so beyond 2031, to inform our successors on the understandings and concerns that we have had here in 2021. And we use the, the, the long range study that we completed in 2018, 19 for that section. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Well, I kind of have one. And oh, I think Tom was ahead of me. Go ahead, Tom.
I just want, just a brief comment. I really appreciated the report. I thought it was very clear, and I appreciated the inclusion of the, the six goals. I think that's great, and that will give our board and future boards a way of ascertaining how we're doing as we take a look at that long range facility plan in the future and our progress towards making sure that our district has strong facilities for our kids and that we're keeping up with deferred maintenance and some of the other challenges that we have. So thank you.
And I think my question will be easy, but I always think it's good to share with the members of the community often. I know when they're looking at buildings that their, their kids are going to, I'm sure they could say that, that their building is deserving as well of having some sort of improvements, especially when we're looking at it from maybe an age perspective. So if you could just share again, Steve, you know, what criteria your group went through in determining, you know, which, which building gets attention, just for the record?
So for the record, our focus really started coming down on our oldest buildings that are in need of investment. So you saw the facility condition assessment that Aaron Boyle led about a year ago, which is a tremendous amount of information that the district really didn't have before. And so we were able to identify a whole level of maintenance needs across the district for our structures. We also compared the seismic inventory that we have done, seismic assessment we've done on all of our buildings, again, another project overseen by Aaron Boyle. You throw that in with the age of our buildings and the fact that we are a confined district. We're a largely urbanized district. That means we're going to need to redevelop sites, not build new across the district. So then you throw the PSU enrollment forecast across the district. So where our growth is going to occur or not occur. It came, became very clear where our highest need was, and that is both Raleigh Hills, K8, and Beaverton High School. There are other buildings and other structures that are also, you know, nearing the end of their lifespan or actually beyond the 70 year lifespan that we like to have. But those two schools, plus the transportation support building down on Allen Boulevard, were the three that were the highest need in the district in evaluating all of them on an equal, you know, one to one type of basis.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? And did you have a question? Or I can't tell if maybe that was the last? No. How about Eric then?
I was really scholarly. I like to report a lot. And I'm kind of fascinated when you start to talk about the beyond 10 year options, you know, like consolidation and strategy. So is it like, the next steps on that is that we, like, one thing I thought might be interesting is to kind of put that strategy, maybe table or tabular so we can see, you know, cost options and thoughts, you know, going forward in the future. When you're looking at, you know, you have four, five, five options it looks like. As you think about, you know, 10 years out and what to do with schools or how to do it properly. So maybe this general comment is like, you know, what's next? Is that something we just keep on following up with every six months to a year or more discussion? So we can get something concrete going.
Right. Well, as Board Member Colette noted, we do have in the report there a number of actions associated with those goals for the long range plan. So selfishly, we have identified a number of reports that we want to provide to the board annually on a range of subjects. And as you note, there are enrollment issues that we're going to need to address. Some that will require capital investment, some which will require political decisions such as boundary adjustments and, dare I say, even consolidation of schools. So we are a changing district. It is not the go-go days of years past. And so we need to take a hard look at the facilities we have, where the growth is going to occur, how that growth is going to occur. And we can only do that, you know, we can give you our best estimate right now, what's going to happen 10 years down the road. But I believe strongly that for the board to be informed and make rational decisions, we need to be presenting this information to you on a, at least an annual basis. And as you note, having steps with, you know, pros and cons type analysis, financial analysis, that's absolutely part of it.
All right. Thank you. That's a great report.
Ann?
I, as I look at all the materials that go into the long range facility plan, I'm struck by really how, how long of a plan it has been to get to this point. There is more data to inform what we are doing than at any time in the district. I think that the recommendation to continue to have annual reports and adjust is exactly where we need to be. I also have some concerns, I guess, three. One is that we're, this long range facility plan is somewhat conflating the bond planning for the short term with what our long range facility plans are, recognizing that we will, would not expect a future board to be revisiting this for at least 10 years. I am concerned that this is perhaps locking in or shortsighted for what a future board would be because it relies on two assumptions that I do not believe have been fully vetted with our community. And in fact, I think there's a lot of evidence that our community disagrees with these two things. And as educators, we would have issues as well. One is it assumes extensive boundary changes taking, and it assumes in fact that, I believe, that schools of a community nature, which we have grown to expect in Beaverton, would no longer be the norm, that we would be requiring extensive busing past neighborhood schools in order to get to the school that you had been assigned. It is something that, you know, you, perhaps a board would choose. That's what we would need to do. But it is something I'm uncomfortable committing a future board to. In addition, it assumes that we, as a board, are comfortable providing greatly different educational experiences, particularly to our high school students. Going to a high school of 1,200 is very different than going to a high school of 3,000, and that we would be committing to a decision like that as part of a long range facility plan is again, something that I'm uncomfortable with. So I don't actually need more information. I, I'm afraid, I believe I have what's here. I don't believe that there is a lot of data that supports having schools of greatly different sizes within a, you know, particularly if they're all comprehensive. Now, we're not trying to pretend that the basketball team at Beaverton High School should be pulling from a different amount of students as the one at Sunset High School. But, but as, you know, accepting some of the basic assumptions of this. But, but as, you know, accepting some of the basic assumptions of this plan would. Force a future board, which will have many new members to long-term decisions. And I wanted to highlight those.
And I, and I'll just, I mean, I really appreciate the thought process that, and again, long, long overdue. And I think this will be something with. That we definitely every year are going to need to revisit. And I again can remember when I. First joined the school board and this huge map being put out in front of us, showing us within the Beaverton School District. And this was six years ago, within the urban growth boundary, there literally at that point, six years ago was not. The land available to build another comprehensive high school. In the northern end, or at least I should say a comprehensive land that we could buy, that we could afford to buy. And now we are watching a leveling out and even a decreasing, but. We are still struggling with that fact of we have capacity within our whole district. But that, that balancing of the capacity where people are choosing to live or can't afford to live or want to live. And having those neighborhood schools. So I, I can see that this is a discussion that, that future boards and when we're, we're talking about a future bond. Of what is it that we value in our district? Cause there is no magic answers. We can't just develop land. We can't just create money. We can't. But we are watching when we do these different boundary changes to kind of correct. That population still keeps creeping up even though with the changes that, that we make. So. I know we'll keep visiting this and I appreciate all of the work that the team put together and we're. A lot further along than we were, let's say 10 years ago. So, so thank you so much and we'll look forward to voting on this at the, at the next board meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So moving on to the next topic. Good evening, Chair Tim Chuck School Board. This is Josh Comas. I would like to recognize. For the long range facility plan, our contract team, so Leroy Landers, Jennifer Lubin, Frank Angelo. Thank you for being here tonight. They're very. Helpful and thoughtful in this whole experience and we appreciate their support. So thank you to that team. And of course, our internal team for, for all their help. So moving on to the next item, the bond accountability committee. We call it the BAC. I'm joined by Brian Kennedy. He's the chair. Of the, of the BAC. And just a quick reminder, our BAC is comprised of nine members, community members. We are also supported by Anne, Brian and Eric Simpson who support our committee meetings. We have six a year and. We appreciate the dialogue. We appreciate the, the input that we get from the committee as we navigate this bond, current bond program. And so with that, Brian Kennedy will talk about. Fourth quarter of 2020 and first quarter of 2021. Brian, thank you for joining us here this evening. Over to you.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Chair, Chair Tim Chuck and the members of the school board. We, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Again, my name is Brian Kennedy and I am the Chair of the Bond Accountability Committee. Again. As you know, the BAC directs the committee chair to draft and submit a report to the superintendent and school board. This particular report, as Josh mentioned, covers the fourth quarter of 2020 and the first quarter of 2021. So the charter also charges the committee to perform a number of functions. But I think the most important is to ensure that bond revenues are only used for the purposes consistent with the voter approved bond measure ballot. So first and foremost, the committee agrees as it has, every time this report has been presented. That the bond revenues are being used for the intended purposes. Additionally, the committee also agrees that the bond program goals are aligned with district policies. Our written report includes more information on some of the other duties assigned to the committee. There are two things I'd like to close with. First, we're really into the final stretch of the bond program with the last major projects nearing completion. The total program cost estimates and program reserves have remained steady. Your staff deserve a huge amount of credit for delivering this program the way that they have. And the committee has been very complimentary of their work throughout the entire program. But getting to this stage with having these reserves in place is really impressive. Second, one of the additional duties the board has asked the committee to take on. Was to make recommendations on a process for considering additional projects to be funded with unallocated program reserve funds. So again, to note, one of the great opportunities because of your staff is that there are in fact unallocated program reserve funds. That can be considered for additional projects, which is a really positive thing. So this topic was added to the committee's April agenda. Technically, that April meeting is not part of this report, but I thought it was an important thing to bring up tonight. Because those recommendations are coming to the board from staff later tonight. I'd like to note that the staff made a great presentation on the potential added projects. And after a really productive discussion, the BAC recommended advancing that list for your consideration. So again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve on the BAC and to work with your great staff. And we really appreciate, the whole committee appreciates the support of the school board. Particularly board members Simpson and Brian who attend the meetings and engage in conversation. So thank you and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Well, Brian, thank you so much for joining us tonight and thank you so much for your willingness to step up and. Serve as Chair. We really appreciate your expertise and, and. We appreciate the whole bond accountability and the expertise that they bring to the work. This is very important and. I think it was well noted when you opened up that huge map and saw all of the different projects that this bond paid for. To see it all in green, that it was on time and on budget and that we were able to do that during a pandemic, when materials, when. When getting staffing, it really speaks highly to our staff and all of our project teams to. Being able to do all of that. But thank you so much for providing the leadership in the direction that the bond accountability. It's very important work to, for us. So Donna, I see that you have a question.
Yes, well, thank you, Brian, for your presentation. And I want to thank everybody on the committee for all their hard work and our board members as well. I guess I have a question regarding the contingency funds. Which of course is always nice because that means that we potentially have a little bit more money in the kitty to do. Extra things that we otherwise would not be able to do. So I'm not sure if you can answer this question, but maybe Josh can. How do we come to know about all these various sundry projects that could possibly be funded with the contingency fund is probably the first one. Is it something that's on our maintenance list that's been listed, sitting on there for a long time? Or how do you come to find out about these things? I know we hear. Concerns from members of the community and staff. About things, but how do you come up with, with your list?
I'll jump in, Brian. It's a great question, Donna. We have. We have been compiling a list of requirements from our principals of schools for. For many years and we have looked at that list and. As Brian mentioned, we came up with a process to prioritize those projects. Here recently, Aaron Boyle has gone out and talked to. Principals about the next bond, but in those conversations, he was able to glean like, what are your, what are your current priorities? What are you looking at for your school? So we're going to touch on that. Here in the next topic about one of those specific projects that deals with security. So there has been that dialogue, there's been that communication. Again, we've had a running list that we've looked at. We've communicated that with the BAC and they provided feedback for that.
Okay, so, so the actual list that we're going to be looking at is just something that the. Bond Accountability Committee. Supported. And that's what we're going to get to, to, to look at from whatever list of items you, you, you have provided them and. Under what would have, what was like the criteria in which they would decide, decide which program to put in the contingency bucket.
So for, so yes, to answer your question, that's a, it's a list that we talked about in a previous board meeting. We've shown. What those projects are. We talked about a repipe at Almonica. We talked about classroom walls where they're needed for security. A list of other projects. So we have continued to, to focus on that list of, of projects. Just a reminder, in recent introductions included the Vos classrooms that jumped into that conversation. For the process for priorities, we dealt with, we looked at what safety and security, we looked at operational impact, and then we looked at. Equity, looking at schools that had free and reduced lunch students and. Using that process to help give a scoring criteria for proposed projects. And so we've developed our list, we've prioritized it and we continue to look at that.
So I guess just, just throwing this out for consideration since. We, as we all know, nobody knows what's going to happen around the corner. So are we considering perhaps? Saving some of those funds and not maybe spending all of them because of something that could possibly happen that. Our budget might not be able to address. It's just a question, nor our normal budget under normal times.
We are keeping some of that program reserve set aside. We're not going to spend all of it. We are looking at the opportunity with Esther Money coming in to. Take some of those projects off specifically HVAC projects that are. Would deal with the pandemic and COVID. And so that is a priority that we're looking at. So there's. There's good news in that Esther, we're very excited for that because that may take some of the. Program reserve project or dollars that we would have set aside for those projects that we can tap into Esther. But we are setting some money aside.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Brian.
Anne, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just a follow-up for Donna's question and then a couple of other observations. You know, projects that haven't finished yet, we still have the contingencies associated with those projects. So. There's still quite, you know, there is some remaining reserve that is still being held. And you know, and I think wisely so, we're, we're in a changing economic time. The other thing that I wanted to try to, I guess, two things. One, I wanted to give the board members a little bit of a view of the committee meetings. As Brian mentioned, you know, it's. Vibrant discussion and we are very fortunate to have a team of experts who participate on that committee and are really ready to come in and. Work to understand with staff what is happening onsite at each place. It's also a committee where people feel very free to. Have agenda suggestions and ask for more information at a future meeting more than at other things where I have seen within the district. So it is really a very collaborative space and the committee members feel very empowered to contribute and direct. And probably to Brian's consternation and a little bit, but, but definitely they, you know, are very free in asking for what it is that they're interested in. As we're looking, and then I don't, I guess I'll save my other comment for when we're talking about the actual projects.
So any other questions for Brian or for the bond accountability? Well, Brian, again, we appreciate you taking the time to be with us this evening and for serving on the bond accountability. It's, it's very much appreciated, appreciated by us. So.
Thank you.
So Josh, who's going to take the? Program reserves?
Next up is Eric.
Eric Boyle.
Okay, Eric.
Yep, I'll take it. Thanks for having me. Aaron Boyle, Administrator for Facilities Development. So I'll, I'll keep it pretty quick here. That teed up the discussion pretty nicely. The, you know, and kind of to elaborate a little bit on the answer to Donna's question. Really the need out there across the district, as you probably read in the long range facility plan is so massive, like it's. It's so far beyond the, the remaining contingency in the bond. It really is a matter of just focusing in on those. Projects that are really needed now and ones that we're able to execute quickly too. I mean. Part of the reason we're coming to you tonight is it's a matter of timing. Our, our bond program really is over kind of at the end of next year. And so we're looking. We're looking to start these projects right now in order to be able to do them next year. But as we discussed, the, the program is in great shape. We've, we're done with all of our major projects at this point. We have some other repair projects ongoing this year and next year, and we're working on executing those, but there. Everything's looking to be in great shape. The three projects we are asking for approval next month on are. A repipe at Almonica, which is just, it's a water quality issue, old piping in the building and going in and updating it to consistent with the rest of schools. Also a fencing project. This was something that was identified by a lot of principals, particularly elementary schools as a. Safety and security needs to just go in and beef up the fencing around the perimeter of the schools. And then lastly, it was the classroom addition at Vos. So we've been working. To go through and do a design and scoping on that project. And feel like it's, we've got it in a pretty good shape right now. It'd be a really good benefit to the school and. Those are our three recommended projects. As Josh mentioned, we are still holding aside contingency for. The other projects that are still ongoing and feel pretty happy with where things are at there. So that, happy to take any questions.
Questions?
Susan, do you want to go first?
It's, it's, it's kind of a bigger, like. Bond is capital money. I understand that, capital projects. And, you know, we have the general fund. Where would it, with Esther funds that might be funding some of these projects? Is that general fund dollars? Is that a different? Kind of funding? Or is it capital? I was just wondering how that worked.
Good questions. And those that actually, when they come into our district, they'd be categorized as general fund. But Esther allows us to utilize those funds for. Such as units, HVAC units as related to COVID-19. The benefit also of utilizing those funds is that we're not. Adding additional. Resources to the district where, so for example, in staffing that we would potentially have to eliminate in three years' time when those funds expire. But it also allows us to save dollars from our local communities. So they don't have to go, we don't have to go forward. Via bond where our community is having to pay for those things, or for that matter, our general fund. If in fact, we don't have a bond to pass it. We would have to lean on that general fund for some of these aging HVAC units and systems to do the repair and or replacement. So. It's, there's a huge plus for us there, but to answer your question, they would come in as general fund dollars.
Eric?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I just remembered the process too, like kind of related to like how those three projects percolate at the top. You know, as Josh mentioned, you know, we have three scoring mechanisms of a one, three or five score, zero, three and five score. And so we had a certain amount of projects that had the perfect 15 score. And then it was almost like a ZBB line. So you just looked at what you had available and there was only a couple of projects that scored 15. So, you know, for the public record, I guess, I mean, it wasn't any selectivity to help one project or another. Really, these were the naturally ones that had the highest scores, highest priority. And it was enough money to barely get them done. So that's how I think those three percolated at the top. And Josh, you can correct if I'm wrong, but that's how the, those are going for the contingency there.
No, that's, that's, that's right. Eric, thank you for talking about the scoring criteria in the actual like. Scoring rank that we give them or the rate, you know, the zero, five, the three, five. And so you're absolutely right. Those, those, those projects are scored high. Right up to the top and you could see that gap between. Those projects that Aaron has just talked about and then other projects that did not make it to the top. Still on the list, still very important and a target for the next bond as we do our planning.
Tom?
Yeah, I'm just curious what projects, if there was another $5 or $10 million available to do what we're doing here. What were kind of the runner-ups? Were some of the other things that were being considered?
Oh geez, I don't have the list sitting in front of me. There was a lot though.
I have it there. I can.
Oh, you do? Oh, perfect.
Quickly covered here. So we had several security projects Tom identified. We had like removing pole stations, doing some exterior lock work. Although high school has an office that we, we was on the list that. It would be a big, a big project, definitely needed, but something that we've identified for the next bond is under the security bucket. Westview had a, a security project as well. And then some other seismic, smaller seismic projects that we've looked at. Those were kind of in summary, the list of. Of, of those projects. Happy to share it with you as well. We also. In the last BAC meeting, we, we looked at that list of projects. We looked at what we're carrying forward and what would be. Moving into the next bond for planning purposes.
Not questioning your prioritization in any way, because what Eric put forward sounds great, but just curious, is this? Comes up in the future, kind of what to expect in terms of that group of projects that might become in our way?
Yeah, and definitely like Josh said, really, you know, we did, we came up with this list kind of in the context of planning for the next bond too. So really the goal was to. To plan all of these for future projects. So even if we didn't pick something for this list. Where it doesn't mean we're not doing it. It's, we're still tracking and we're still looking for the means to be able to execute those projects.
It sounds like there's almost like a centralized list that you guys are drawing off of when funds become available. It sounds like there's almost like a centralized list that you guys are drawing off of when funds become available. I'm really glad to hear that.
Anne?
Hey, Anne, before you make your comment, Susan, I want to go back to your comment. I said general fund. Fortunately, we have texting methods, and so I have been corrected and I appreciate the correction. Uh, it's actually, it'd be categorized as a grant fund. Which makes complete sense, so.
Well, but you know, it's important to understand where the dollars come from. So thank you, Carl.
And whoever texted you.
Texted me, we don't.
Mike.
Hey, you wait, yes. Glad everyone's uh aware.
Paying attention.
Yeah, you know, um, as I have been listening to the dialogue about uh the extra opportunities and projects and um, you know, these are these the right three? Now, I have been reflecting a lot on uh moments where we thought, are we ever going to get everything done that we committed to our voters? And so I just want to acknowledge what a great, I mean, frankly, a little emo- you know, for uh as as somebody was around then, I'm just so, feel so fortunate that we were able to get the bond to such a healthy place that we could even be having this dialogue. Is really such a credit to our staff, Carl, and the people who have worked with you. Superintendent Grouting, uh, we have really worked hard to get to this place. Um, and I am just so thrilled that we are. Over time, uh, we have realized uh that we would have perhaps something that wasn't on the original list and when I look to at what it is that we have already spent money on, I'm so pleased to see that we've been very consistent as a board and as staff united in uh using those funds to fulfill things that were authorized by the voters and with the original charge. They've been used uh for seismic upgrades, uh to add small amounts of additional capacity at schools, moving around portables to provide educational programs that were important to our students, uh to satisfy legal requirements such as Title IX and to with a particular focus on safety and security across our buildings. Um, and I believe that these three projects all fit and then to, you know, needed maintenance, you know, sometimes that happens in an emergency. I'm glad we're, you know, still fingers crossed. It looks like we're gonna get to El Monica before it becomes one of those. Which I think is, you know, the important intent here as well. So I I'm just thrilled that we're having the conversation. I believe these projects are consistent with the board's longtime goals. Um, and I'm very pleased that we can be having the discussion.
And I I I just right on top of that too. I was just thinking, um, we have uh other school districts in the state, not to be named, but one a big one to the east of us that uh, um, you know, has not been able to fulfill what they for their voters and that we were able, our 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 taxpayers trusted us with a bond and that we had the best bond team in the state be able to go through with these projects and the leadership from the top all the way down and we are, we are very, very um fortunate uh to have. And when I was talking to some board members yesterday, just the fact that we are able to talk about uh having extra resources that we are able to go, I mean, that's just not, not the case. And uh so I'm glad that we have extra resources to even be making these kind of uh choices. Um, and we know we still have other work to do and other priorities and keeping our students safe and and keeping the deferred maintenance. But again, um, ju- just absolute um kudos to to the team and and the trust of the taxpayer to give us that bond money uh so that we could improve um our our school district uh exponentially. So that's great. Susan?
Yeah, I just have one comment because, you know, I'm going back in time to when the bond was uh, when I first came on the school board and a shout out to Leanne and Linda Doug- Degman for getting the bond passed. I realize there was a lot of support there, but um I I remember there was, you know, a lot of uh worry whether or not that bond would pass. So I I just wanted to cha- shout out to to school board members that were a really big part of that process.
That's great. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to our our last item here and uh that is the uh Sato um boundary adjustment. So Mr. Sparks.
So to bookend this conversation here uh tonight, our uh final request, as you note, is a proposed boundary adjustment between Sato Elementary and Springville uh Elementary. This is um a proposal to help clean up the uh boundary between those two schools. The development is actually, uh, when the lines were um put in place, we did our best estimate of where property lines were going to be and where the those natural breaks would be. Uh, we have a much better idea now and would like to make that uh uh change starting in the fall of the next school year. We'd just like to establish board objectives at this time. And if you would just allow me to um show you one thing to kind of illustrate the point here. Robert McCracken took this picture here earlier um today um to show you where the current boundary line is right now. It's the center line of the street. On the right is Sato and on the left is Springville. And you can see at the top of the hill a school bus, which may or may not be looking at where it's um headed to the curve. It's probably the Sato bus, but there would also be a Springville bus uh coming down this street. So um, we would like to proceed with this small um very targeted uh boundary adjustment. Board member Tyner asked a question earlier um this week about if there were any other uh boundaries being uh amended. And there are not. Uh, the middle school boundary would remain the same. The high school boundary remained the same and there'd be no other elementary school boundaries adjusted. So with that, I will um end my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from board members? Tom?
Um, about how many families do you expect this change to affect?
Right now, there's about six elementary school families that this would impact. Over time, the um balance is is probably about a wash in terms of prospective families. Uh, the the area up in that of um that neighborhood I showed in that graphic is largely single family. Um, but over on uh Kaiser Road, there is what will likely be apartments and much higher density of development that we would take out of Springville and add to Sato. So in total, we expect it to be a a close to a wash.
And do you have a plan for any sort of notice or engagement to those families?
Absolutely. Our intention is to do direct mailers to each of the property owners um for uh the area that we're looking at um changing around and having at least one and possibly two um neighborhood meetings with those um people to let them know what we're talking about and what this means for them.
Thank you.
Anne?
Yes, Steve, I have just a couple of questions. Um, one was just a clarification on the map and I apologize, you know, I know you're not here with your laser pointer or anything, but it's unclear in, is the grayed out section like not built yet? Is that what that means? You know, are we talking about making a boundary decision for an area that's largely unbuilt?
So the aerial that I'm showing here, I I hope you could see it.
Yeah, thank you.
This um the areas that are um, you know, undeveloped right now are, that is, this is as current as a um aerial as we can uh get for you.
Today.
The, this isn't necessarily today, uh because
I'm just teasing. I know how fast things change up there.
Yeah, so the Hossford development area up here in the yellow um um polygon. Um, that has been leveled and earthmoving going on out there. So it's ripping and roaring right now. But over here, it um, you know, near this neighborhood, um, there's been some development, but learn, all this right in here, just south of the uh creek, has not been developed. So the gray area that we noted, that you noted, yes, uh, that's approved development, but it hasn't been um started yet. And this little finger out here, um, where it says Springville now moved to Sato. Over here, the move to Sato area is high density um zoning. And so just given the proximity of this area to Sato, there is a clear walk zone that uh would be much better going to Sato rather than being bussed to Springville.
Okay, thank you for helping me understand that. Uh, is there any uh thought that we might need to implement any kind of transition plan or uh has there been consideration or discussion on that?
Absolutely. And that's something we would want to discuss with those families because we're not talking about a lot of children right now. Um, you know, if it's one fifth grader, um, you know, it would make sense to legacy that that child at um Sato or Springville, whatever would be appropriate.
Then I I have just one more question of the um mostly just because I'm looking at, you know, I I understand just that you'll work to these objectives. You do, you do a great job of that. Um, so I'm just trying to make sure, you know, is the, the target is uh, I guess, how will we know if it was sufficient relief in twenty twenty-two? Um, and if there's been thought given to that.
Yeah.
Particularly because at at this stage, it looks like there's no houses, uh which is part of why we're thinking about doing it now. Um, I'm curious if you can just give us a little bit more background. Is it really about twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, or is it about the future? What? What are we trying to achieve?
I think it's it, it's far more about the uh future. There will be some uh near term benefit by removing um potentially some students from Sato, assuming there isn't a legacy program or a a large leg legacy program um offered. And that will be a short term um improvement to Sato. But long term, there will be more development going on out there, which we expect uh more children to be you know, registered at both Springville and um Sato. So the the capacity issue will not go away immediately, but over time, um, it will.
Leanne?
Um, of the, my question is of the six families, have you reached out to them and how, what's their response been?
We haven't reached out to anyone yet. We wanted to come to you, the board, first to um, you know, solicit your approval to proceed with this by adopting the um objectives at the June meeting. And once we have um, you know, the board's authorization to proceed, then um we will reach out to those families.
Okay, thank you.
So uh Steve, correct me, this was uh similar to what we did several years back uh with Shoals Heights and Nancy Riles when we were anticipating the Cooper Mountain. Um, that we were trying to be proactive before a lot of that was developed, that we changed those boundaries around, just knowing that it would need to alleviate the overcrowding that could occur at Shoals Heights and in Nancy Riles. Is that?
That is correct. That is the most akin boundary adjustment that I've been a part of.
And if anybody has driven on Shoal, on Shoals uh ferry in a hundred and seventy-fifth lately, uh, I mean, i- it's just an entirely different area. I mean, um, I mean, you just could have never imagined that that many people would be living. Um, so I I I appreciate you guys giving thought to this now and uh we will certainly revisit this next month. But if anybody has any questions or thoughts, um, you know, please pass them on to Steve before our June board meeting. So.
I I guess I just have one uh quest- more question. Sorry, Becky.
No, that's okay.
Now, as I think about that area, I I wonder, is the objective to balance uh the two schools or is the objective to get Springville to a long time stable place, recognizing that Sato will likely get over, you know? Are you, uh, it's, if I'm, if I'm putting on my future board member hat, I'm thinking to myself, am I gonna be making three schools out of two, or am I gonna let one sit and not have to go through one more boundary change again? And just let the Sato community, you know, explode? How do we face those kinds of? I think that's the question we're asking ourselves and and I'm not actually sure. I I don't know what the right answer is, but I do know Springville community has gone through an awful lot of change. Um, some of those families, particularly those who started at Jacob Wismer, have been through a gargantuan amount of boundary change. Um, and you know, if there's something we can do to, yeah, anyway, I guess I just put that out for the rest of the board to consider, you know, what we we sort of are setting people up one more time. Is this what we would want to be doing or or would we want to be looking at it a different way?
At risk of being muted by um Dr. Mead, I will just observe that um earlier the, we talked about returning to the board on an annual basis to talk about these very issues and um we will come to the board with um issues, recommendations and hope for a robust discussion with the board to help us, you know, pers- you know, choose the right path to address these types of questions. So you're right, there's not an answer that I can offer you here this evening. I can give you my opinion, but I don't think that is a um, you know, this is an appropriate place or time um to do that. But uh, yes, we need to um ask those questions that you just asked um board member Brian.
All right, any other questions? All right. Hmm, thank you, Steve, for joining us tonight and look forward to it next month and then uh action items.
So uh Chair Tim Chuck, before I move a motion, I just want to comment on one of the items in the consent agenda. Um, and how happy I am to see a pre-K program going in at McKinley and for Grove, especially McKinley, which is, as you know, very near and dear to my heart and has been a school that really needs uh pre-K. So with that, I move to approve the consent agenda.
And I second. I'm properly moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda. Um, board members, please signify by saying aye, nay, or abstain when your name is called. Zone one, Susan Greenberg.
Aye.
Zone two, Anne Bryan.
Aye.
Zone three, Eric Simpson.
R.
Zone four, Donna Tyner.
Aye.
Zone five, Leanne Larson.
Aye.
Zone seven, Vice Chair Tom Colette.
Aye.
Zone six, Becky Tim Chuck. Aye. With that, motion passes seven to zero. Final order of business, uh, any board communication this evening? Tom?
I wanted to um keep the board members up to date um on a a joint process that's going on with the city council uh concerning our student resource officers. So the city council has agreed to uh do a joint process with us to evaluate the SRO program. Uh, and this process is going to be performed by a third party consultant who will evaluate the program and is going to provide recommendations. I met this Friday with uh, or this past Friday, I should say, with uh Councilor Sansusi and Councilor Tivenon. And we're working on preparing the RFP uh to go out requesting the work from the consultant. You'll be getting an email from us probably in the next week or two. Um, and it'll have uh information about the preparations and then an opportunity for board member input into some of the questions and actions. In order to connect with the newly elected board members, uh because much of this work is going to be happening under their tenure on the board. Uh, we extended an opportunity for one of the newly elected members to join our our group. Uh, myself, Mark and Allison. Um, and really excited to have a board member elect Dr. Karen Perez de Silva uh joining us to support the preparations for the RFP. Uh, feel free to reach out if you have any questions. Um, happy to chat with anybody uh about this work, but you'll be getting a communication soon from the group.
Any other board communications?
I just have one quick thing. Uh, you know, and I know we spoke about it already, but I wanted just to highlight for board members who might not have uh been aware, uh, when I am out in the community, I have been stopped on numerous occasions by people who are just so grateful for the health protections that our community has taken, that is making it possible for kids to reengage in schools in and at particularly their their activities in ways that they have not been able to, uh so that they're able to um you know, have basketball games, it, you know, with fans. Uh, I know uh some of the schools are starting to have theater productions and
some of the schools are starting to have theater productions and even a concert. It's it's really a phenomenal change that is very heartfelt with appreciation for medical professionals who are making this possible and our safety personnel who have worked so hard and our teachers to be back in buildings and supporting kids in ways that are important to them. So I'm very excited to see the year ending in this way.
Great, it is great. Any other comments? Or comments? Okay, Superintendent Grady, any final comments?
Just thank you all for a great board meeting and we covered a lot of complex topics and appreciate everybody for their attentions. A long time to be on Zoom.
Yep, I was just going to say the same thing, board members. We had a huge packet. We had a lot of important things to take care of for our students, for our staff, for our community. And I I appreciate your attention and your professionalism to doing this important board work. And so thank you, thank you so much for the attention to that. So with that, our meeting is adjourned. And board members, if you could just stick around so we can make a brief discussion for what's up next. So with that, meeting is adjourned.